So I will call this meeting of the Lake Mills City Council to order for Tuesday, August 19th. Sam, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Kurler?
Here.
Ms. Schmager?
Here.
Ms. Quedno?
Here.
Mr. Koets?
Here.
Mr. Waters?
Here.
Thank you. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our next agenda item is correction and acceptance of the city council meeting minutes. We have minutes from our last meeting on August 5th. Are there any corrections or comments? Okay, seeing none, I will accept those into the record. Next, we have our board and committee reports, and we have meeting minutes from the June 10th Public Works Board and the June 23rd Parks Board. Are there any comments or corrections on either of those minutes? Okay, seeing none, we will accept those into our record as well. Next is correspondence and constituent contacts. And I tried to diligently go through all the contacts I received this time, so I'm going to kick it off. And if anybody received anything in addition to what I described, please let me know. So I think a number of folks have been using our new option to contact all the city council members together. So we've received a message from Rock Lake Improvement Association encouraging members to contact the city council about the water level order. At our last meeting, we received a handout asking the status of the Milton Street petition. I think I counted 12 messages or messages from 12 different residents on Milton Street in support of the Catlin Drive and speed limit changes that are on tonight's agenda. We received an inquiry for how to apply for city council and boards, which I forwarded to Misty. Let's see, we received a couple of emails about Sandy Beach Mobile Home Park, support to keep the mobile homes, and information about how they support local businesses. We received two items regarding Mr. Mangan's petition for a future land use amendment that is on tonight's agenda. And then I personally received a request for help to find affordable housing in Lake Mills from someone who works in Lake Mills but doesn't live here and was trying to find somewhere affordable. Also, an, let's see, oh, a request for help with a landlord-tenant dispute, which Troy was able to help me out with. Thank you, Troy. And then I received from one of our tree committee members, a copy of a newspaper article from the Madison paper about Madison's tree ordinance, and I've shared that with other council members. So hopefully, I got everything that we all received, but I'll just go through with everyone else to see if you received any additional inquiries that I didn't mention. Michelle?
I had all of those, and a phone call regarding a tax assessment question, and an email regarding Bartles Beach parking.
Great, great.
I also had a Rocket Lake Improvement Association dealing with the Sandy Beach recommendations. I think that came from, that was stemming from a Rocket Lake Improvement Association recommendation. And I had two Sandy Beach restaurant support letters as well.
Okay, thanks. Mary?
I also received a few questions and comments regarding the tax assessment. I joined the RLIA annual meeting. I met with a small group of citizens who reside on Milton Street regarding their concerns and solutions, and also spoke with Mr. Barry Luce.
Thank you. And that reminds me that I also spoke to Barry Luce this morning, so thank you for reminding me of that. And Greg?
Nothing else to add.
Nothing further. Okay. Thanks, everybody, for the summaries. Okay, we are on to public comments. So individuals who have registered to speak are invited to address the council at this time. State your name and address when you're called on to make your comments. No action will be taken for items that are not listed on the agenda, and each speaker is limited to three minutes. So I've got the list here. I'll be going through. There is one comment on the item that's not on tonight's agenda, so I'll be doing that one last. And we do have a timer up here that I'm still getting used to using, but hopefully, that will be helpful to the speaker to see how much time you have remaining. So the first person to speak on an item on tonight's agenda is J.B. Clark from Milton Street, and then the next person will be Julie, no, I'm sorry, the next person will be Jacob Art.
Hello, J.B. Clark of 122 Milton Street. I want to begin tonight with an apology. I apologize for the tone of the silent protest that I staged at the last city council meeting. In hindsight, I realize it was disrespectful and ultimately unwarranted in light of the quiet progress that was being made on our issues. I want to thank members of the city council who reached out to us afterward to assure me of these, that these issues had not been forgotten. I'd also like to thank council member Greg Koets for shepherding these issues through the city works department so efficiently. These efforts may reflect well on our city government's commitment to public safety. My neighbors and I are cautiously optimistic that the management of the items on tonight's agenda will reflect that same commitment. If my advocacy has seemed aggressive at times, it is not out of a desire to be confrontational. It's coming from a passion to advocate for those who cannot advocate for themselves on issues that could easily be buried indefinitely under procedures and quietly dismissed later as literally warranting no further action. It was never my intention to be disrespectful of quiet progress. Having acknowledged and apologized for that, I want to close by saying how grateful I am for your attention to these issues. We are hopeful that tonight will mark real progress towards making Milton Street safer for everyone. Thank you.
Thank you. Next person again is Jacob Art. And then we'll have Lynn Clegghorn will be next.
Hello, my name is Jacob Art. I'm at, live at 527 Mulberry. And I just wanted to support the Chevron arrows on bike paths and support bike paths in general. They're, they save lives, and especially for kids who are more inexperienced at them. The path, it prevents the kids from darting back out and in to avoid the parked cars. And we're having a lot of parked dual-wheel trucks, not a lot, I mean, there's one constantly, dual-wheel trucks encroaching on the bike path on South Main. I think maybe just a better, more vigilance on, on the bike path parking would help out. Yet also, it brings in tourist dollars. The more bike paths we get, especially with these e-bikes, e-bikes coming on because a lot more people are riding bikes, it's getting a lot of people out there. And it really is going to pay dividends on tourist dollars, especially if we can just kind of nudge it around the lake. That is going to bring, and we're on this Ice Age Trail, too. So that is bringing people who are well organized into town to, you know, to spend time and sometimes overnight. Bike paths.
And I apologize, I forgot to reset it. So you've got about, you've got about 30 seconds left, Jacob. Sorry.
Okay. That's all I had. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next person is Lynn Clegghorn.
Hi, my name is Lynn Clegghorn. My husband, Peter Kershoffer, and I live on the corner of 523 South Main Street and Milton. We're just here to support the resolution involving the Catlin Drive right and left turn onto South Main, and also for lowering the speed limit on Milton Street. We really appreciate the efforts of the city manager and the council to consider the implementation of these solutions that will increase the safety of Milton Street residents, our community high school kids, and pedestrians. Thank you.
Thank you. Nice and quick. Okay, next person is Peter Kershoffer. Sorry, makes a lot of beeps here.
Hi, I'm Peter Kershoffer on 523 South Main Street and on the corner of that and Milton Street. I'm addressing the privilege in the street for our street on, on Milton Street. We're one of the few or only that requested a privilege on the street for the little sidewalk with the carriage walk that was previously there. We were hoping to retain or get that sidewalk re-replaced. It's been helpful to us because that's where we take out our, our garbage to the side as opposed to dragging it all the way down to, to the driveway. It's an easy shot for us. But there's also another side benefit. It's not just for us. The parents that drop off high school, or yeah, high school kids, they use that a lot. We had one actually on, on Main Street, and when they did the Main Street project, that was taken away, and we didn't ask to have that one replaced. But this one is important. Again, they, the, the high school parents drop off their kids there, so they're not going all the way down to our driveway or whatever. It's, it's helpful for them in inclement weather for them to exit out of their car and, and be able to, to get to the corner to, to cross over to the high school. So again, I'm, we're hoping that we can, we can get this reinstituted. I know there's, it's kind of on the edge of the amount of space given for the, the tree protection area. Looking at the drawing, it's a tiny corner of that, you know, here, here's my little display. Here's the, what the, what the sidewalk looks like, a tiny portion of it falls within that circle. You know, is that really a big deal? We're, we're proposing, if that doesn't work, could we even cut it off? So, or completely just make it a straight sidewalk so that we could still have that there? Just wanted to see if we could address that. So that's what I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next person is Ben Clark.
Hi, my name is Ben Clark from 122 Milton Street, and I'm here to talk about the traffic coming features. Our whole street is probably in favor of having, number one, for having the traffic going only left and right and not onto Milton Street. And then the second one is that instead of 25 miles per hour, 15 miles per hour. Thank you.
Thank you, Ben. Okay, next person is Sarah Clement. Get this set up here, Sarah.
Hello, my name is Sarah Clement. I live at 116 Milton Street. I'm here with my neighbors to also voice my support for ordinance 1280, reducing the speed limit. I agree with the entire ordinance with reducing the speed limit around the parks and areas where children and families recreate in the beaches. But we also are especially interested in urging city council to go ahead and pass that for Milton Street. While there is a school zone sign posted on Main Street or Highway 89, I just want to point out that according to the saferroutes.org engineering guidelines, a school zone is a roadway immediately adjacent to the school or extending toward the school, usually extending one to two blocks in each direction outside the perimeter of the school property, and that would encompass Milton Street. So I think it's, it's well within established guidelines to lower the speed limit on Milton Street to 15. And then I also want to ask that city council pass resolution 2548 regarding the left-right exit onto Main Street out of Catlin Drive. I did look up criteria from the Wisconsin Manual on Uniform Traffic Devices, and those guidelines say that the frequency of gaps in the traffic stream that are sufficient for student crossing is different at every crossing location, but when the delay between the occurrences of adequate gaps becomes excessive, as it is on Main Street where students have to wait a long time to find a gap to cross, when those gaps become excessive, students might become impatient and endanger themselves by attempting to cross the street during an inadequate gap. In these instances, the creation of sufficient gaps needs to be considered to accommodate the crossing demand. So there is quite a degree of crossing demand coming out of Catlin Drive, having to shoot across infrequent, short gaps on Main Street. And so they rapidly accelerate onto Milton Street, and that's creating a lot of the problems that we're noticing with safety. So I think, given those guidelines in the MUTC handbook, I think making left-right turn out of Catlin Drive would eliminate the need to shoot across those gaps. They would instead be joining with the traffic. I also want to point out, I appreciate the concerns that city council members and other, other professionals have raised about possibly pushing the Milton Street problem to other streets using that left-right turn strategy. And I just want to point out that acknowledges there is a problem on Milton Street, but having students turn automatically enforces slowing down. So you have to slow down to turn left or right instead of accelerate straight across. And then if they're going to turn onto another side street other than Milton, they have to also slow to make that turn. So I think it reduces the risk to the other streets as well. Thank you very much.
Okay, next speaker is Daniel Bealich regarding the rezone.
Good evening. My name is Daniel Bealich, and I reside at W-7148 County Road V. I am here to voice my concerns and resistance in the rezoning of the parcel of land from single-family to multifamily or planned neighborhood behind my property. Two major concerns that immediately affect my family is the increased light pollution and the increase in road traffic from the many new residents. I would like to talk about this more, but my main concerns and comments come from watching the planning committee session and the first reading session. I am newer to the community, but many have made it clear, this developer has been fighting the rezoning of this parcel of land for quite some time. My concern is, if this does move forward, what is stopping him from fighting for another 15 to 20 years until all buildings in the plan are only large units? The expectation for what a planned neighborhood should be, should have, is very irresolute. I don't have trust or belief in that the transition to planned neighborhood with a buffer of single-family homes is the end goal. In this discussion about the buffer of homes in the planned neighborhood plan, committee members have mentioned the desire of having single-family homes included in the plan. During the planning committee session, it was made clear that single-family homes are not in the developer's portfolio. The smallest he can and will build are duplex homes. Members have also expressed a desire to have home-owned residential property. The multifamily units will not be resident-owned, they will be rented. I am also hard-pressed to believe the duplexes will be resident-owned and not also rented properties. With this rezoning, I think it's clear, no homes will be resident-owned. As well, an interesting point was brought up, that there is a need for more single-family homes available inside the city, close to downtown. With limited land available for this, I wonder what other options are available. Multifamily rental units would take up the dwindling land that could be used for single-family homes. Even if a developer doesn't find this avenue profitable currently, down the road when fluctuations and costs occurs, that can be different. It doesn't need to be developed immediately. The property can be, continue to be farmed in the meantime. Finally, there is a lot of open land surrounding Lake Mills, far away from amenities, that, by the discussion of planned neighborhood, sounds more optimal for that zoning there. It was mentioned that part of planned neighborhood plan is to include amenities, possibly a corner store or other small stores. Wouldn't that zoning be more beneficial for those areas that are further away from current amenities? Let me close with the following. I oppose this change to the parcel of land. Multifamily units could decrease surrounding property values, so in the interest of preservation of property value for all involved, my hope is that this parcel of land remains zoned for single-family homes. I want to live in my home and contribute to this community for decades to come. It is my belief that this change will negatively impact the local community and would be better left zoned for single-family homes. Thank you.
Thank you. Next person is Jay Ludeman, also on ordinance 1279. And then I think it's Gene Burrow. I'm not sure if I'm reading your name right. It will be the next person.
Jay Ludeman, W-7176 County Road V. I am also here to oppose the change of the R-1 rating to the planned neighborhood. In our discussions last week, I'm sorry, two weeks ago, and at the various meetings, it was brought out by one of these gentlemen over here, I guess he's not even here, that R-1 doesn't even mean a single family living in a single dwelling, that it could be duplexes or quadplexes. That the point being is that they, that is very likely that you would end up having no dwellings in there with single families living in them, single building, single dwellings with single families living in them. It's important to remember that the reason for the R-1 rating for this particular parcel was made because of the huge apartment complexes, parcel was allowed to be the apartment complexes, and this was supposed to offset and balance that. I believe the number was 45% multifamily units and 55% single-family units that various city councils have already agreed to and passed and prevented this developer from, from going there. This planned community allows for up to R-12 apartments to be built in there, and, like I said, the possibility of actually zero single-dwelling, single-family homes being in there. No matter what we do, even if you, we, you can't expect this developer to come back again and again and again. And, and whatever you decide, unless it's in his favor, he will come back and attack other city councils and continue to do this. This is about the fourth or fifth time that we've had to come and, and try to keep this area as single-family homes for us. So, you know, there's no reason to do this. He already has one of the largest, if not the largest apartment complex in the, in city of Lake Mills, and why does he need to add another, I don't know, I think it's 14 acres of more apartment complexes, when, like we've said before, there is a shortage of single-family homes? If this developer does not wish to do that, perhaps he would be willing to sell it to someone who will. Thank you.
Thank you. Again, next person is, I think it's Gene Burrow, if I'm reading that correctly?
My name is Gene Burrow. I live at W-7162 County V, at Lake Mills. My, I'm on this Tarranina Park Road, this complex behind us there. My quest is to leave it as R-1 in that respect, instead of making it all apartments back there, or multifamily apartments. The other, other concern I had is, when this property was sold, there was two streets that were, that enter into this parcel, as I see right now, which is what has been built there already, there is no through streets to that complex right now. And it looks like the other portion that will be there won't be no through streets there either. So is, is that correct or incorrect for a division like this? The other question I probably have is, in the complex that is there, they have driveways. Are those driveways adequate for fire trucks to get into those complexes? So by looking at what they have now, they'll probably be doing the same throughout the other portion, that way. So my concern is, leave it as R-1, so we can get some single families behind us there then. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next person is Brandon Brown, I think it is, also on ordinance 1279.
Hello, I'm Brandon Brown. My wife and I live at W-7184 County Road V. We live in front of the proposed development for ordinance 1297. We moved in about a year and a half ago, and we moved in like under the impression that the land behind us was R-1 for single-family, and that would stay that. We're just concerned with the influx of traffic that the multifamily homes will bring on an already busy street. We just ask that the council keep the proposed development a single-family. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, let's see, next is Tom Vins.
Tom Vins, N-6789 Sunset Road. I'm here in support of Barry Luce and his project at the Bayberry. I've known Barry for many years, and I met him first at the mansion where he brought that back from boarded-up windows. It'd be quite a major impact for our community, and of course, he's done many buildings since that time. The Bayberry, this will be his second time around in redoing it, if you will. I wish, in a way, he wasn't doing it, but I can always tell Barry that. He has a love of old buildings and appreciation of historical things that is far deeper than probably anybody else in the room. That's his greatest strength. His biggest weakness, his love of old buildings with historical characteristics that need to be brought back. But he does it. I'm disappointed that the project hasn't moved along quicker, but I've seen pretty significant progress of late, and I also see all the things that are lined up, ready to go. I'm concerned about the time elements, but it would be a shame to have somebody go as far as they've gone and not quite make the goal. I don't know. But I'm just saying, I, I think in your consideration for this project, I've done old things, too, and I know it's always more involved than you think it's going to be. It's not an excuse, but it's reality. So I, I hope that you consider this, and I think that this will be, I hope. No more projects after this, right? We'll just get it done.
I didn't see a commitment there.
Okay, thank you, Tom. Next person is Julie Bean.
My name is Julie Bean. I live at 336 Sandy Beach Road and also Number Nine in the Pines. I would like you all to know and understand that along with several others that have been living here for 30, 40, 50-plus years, and we feel without much thought of the board on your part, you're kicking my family out of our home. This is why we set out with a petition to the business owners in Lake Mills and explained our position. And as you can see, we have collected several signatures in support of us at the Sandy Beach Trailer Park. So I want to urge you, before you vote this next September 2nd, please remember me in this plea. I do not want to be rehomed.
Thank you. And our last person signed up tonight is Tracy Young.
Hello, my name is Tracy Young. I live at 251 Sandy Beach Drive, Sandy Beach Road, excuse me. I've been a resident of Sandy Beach Trailer Park for nine years. My children and grandchildren come up to the lake, as well as friends and other family members. When I purchased here, it was an investment in my retirement with a great community. I do regular upkeep on the interior and exterior of my trailer, keeping up our landscaping and yard work. It's a source of pride for me. We own our trailer and paid sales tax on it at the time of purchase. We lease the lot and boat parking. We do not have a lease slip, we do not lease a slip, with payments for those going to the city. We pay for our own water, electricity, and garbage. With all our cost, we spend approximately $4,000 a year, or for our six months. You add on what we spend for the summer at local businesses, and that number increases significantly. An example is, last weekend, we had a foursome golf outing at the Lake Mills Golf Club with lunch at the clubhouse. That was a 400-plus-dollar expenditure. Those dollars are going directly to the local community. That is one day from one trailer. If you multiply that by 80 or 90 trailers for a season, that's a substantial economic impact that the trailer park provides to local retailers. There are residents of the trailer park that have a 50-plus-year history, starting with their grandparents that have been coming their whole lives. These people don't come up and sit in their trailer, they come up for the community, and they visit local businesses, injecting income into the city. Yes, we think of this as our city. Yes, we think of this as our city. What is the plan for a loss of city revenue that comes with the elimination of trailer park, and what's the timeframe for that to be fully integrated? What is the plan for city employees from this lost revenue that the trailer park provides directly for the city? Losing money for the budget that the trailer park provides will have an impact. What is the plan for loss of business revenue that the revenue, that the residents of our trailer park inject into the community? These are just some of the thoughts and concerns that I have concerning eliminating any or all of the trailer park. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Okay, that is the last person registered to speak tonight, so thank you, everyone, for sharing your thoughts with the council. Michelle, if you could just lift the clock down. Thank you. So our next agenda item is the city manager's report, and we have our monthly report from Drake, as well as a bunch of financial statements and other reports. Drake, anything that you want to highlight?
I'll highlight, I'll highlight one of particular interest to the council. So we have received some preliminary information from the DNR on the water level order amendment request submitted by the city. In general, the DNR is amenable to most of what the city council requested. The biggest piece has been a gradual increase in the spring and a gradual drawdown in the fall. There's some clarification still being sought from the DNR on the kind of outline that they provided, conversations with the dam programmer in order to figure out operations of it, and then conversations with the DNR on scheduling of a public information meeting, which we anticipate happening in the second half of October, but has not yet been finalized. So once all of that has been ironed out, we should get then their, their full draft order that we'll distribute and make, make available, and then proceed with making sure that we get the notices out to the public about the public information meeting that'll be coming up. Other than that, we, one other item of interest as we enter budget season, the city did receive its net new construction number. It was 0.83%. It's the lowest number we've had in, oh, at least three years. As a reminder, the net new construction number is essentially the number that you're allowed to increase your budget. We haven't ran, we, the budget, the levy worksheet has not yet been published by the state, but based on past practice, I would anticipate that 0.83% equates to $10,000 to $20,000 in allowable levy increase. In years past, we've been more in the, somewhere between $60,000 and $80,000 in allowable levy increase. So a, a lower number than we've been experiencing, but not a situation that is uncommon across the state of Wisconsin. If there's any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Any questions for Drake on any of the other documents that we have? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on. Thank you, Drake, and we will move on to council business. So our first item under council business is an update and discussion on the Bayberry Inn. So I guess we'll ask staff to go first, and then Mr. Luce is here as well, and I think would like to make some remarks.
Good evening, council. So you guys probably looked at my memo, maybe compared it to the one we gave back, I think it was in March. This is obviously being brought in front of you guys, as Tom mentioned, the deadline for this developer's agreement is coming up quick. It's in October. So staff thought it'd be a good idea to kind of let you guys see where this project is at. I'm assuming you're going to be tasked with a decision to make when this expires, and I think, I've had a few conversations with, with Barry. He has no intentions of letting it slip through his fingers. He'd like to finish it. Recently, we have got a few items, some big-ticket items checked off. The plumbers have got their state-approved plans and have roughed in the, pretty much the entire building. Most of it's framed, rough-framed in, but we do have some big hurdles to get over. October would be a miracle, for sure, but that's kind of for you guys to decide how you want to move forward.
Are there any questions for our building inspector? Okay, and Barry Luce is here. He's the sponsor of the project. I think you wanted to make a few words, so if there's no objections, I'll recognize Barry to speak to the council.
Hi, my name is Barry Luce. I'm at 406 Mulberry Street in Lake Mills. I started this project because I thought it was the perfect thing for Lake Mills. We're short on housing and rental units, and I wanted to save this old historical building. So taking this 24-room hotel and changing it into a nine-family unit, I thought was the perfect idea. But there's 9,000 square feet of living space there, and because of some issues that we've had, I, I didn't get it going as fast as I should have, and I apologize for that. But I still think it's a great asset for the city to have nine people, nine apartments, to be able to just walk downtown and enjoy the ambiance of the town. And I also think that what makes Lake Mills so unique are the, are the old buildings. And the old Bayberry Inn is a magnificent building, and I'd hate to see something happen to it, so that's why I did what I did. Any questions?
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Luce? Greg.
Mr. Luce, thanks for coming tonight. What's the projected timeline on completing the project at this point?
I would like to have six months, but I'd take three.
What does your contractor think?
I, I think he'd go along with six months, too.
So six months beyond October, or six months from today?
Yeah, from today.
From today?
I mean, I've got, I've put all new windows in the project. I mean, I've got over $300,000 invested into this house to think. I've put all new windows, I had all new siding. We've rebuilt, so, I mean, I've, we've done quite a bit with the plumbing.
So the goal is to get the outdoor things done before the, the weather turns and then complete it inside? Why, why there's snow on the ground, basically?
Well, I'm trying to do the outside, because it's basically almost all done, so that it looks good for the neighborhood, and while we're on the inside, it doesn't detract from the neighborhood.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else?
Any other questions? Okay, this is just scheduled for an update and discussion this evening, so no decision items, and the permit is through October 1st. Right now, the developer's agreement. Okay, right, thank you for being here, Mr. Luce.
Thank you.
Okay, our next agenda item is Resolution 25-47. Sam, would you please read that title for us?
City Council Resolution 25-47, authorizing the city manager to execute a task order with the city engineer for the plating, design, and bidding of Brookstone 9.
I move to approve City Council Resolution 25-47, authorizing the city manager to execute a task order with the city engineer for the plating, design, and bidding of Brookstone Phase 9.
Second?
Motion by Ms. Quinell, seconded by Mr. Waters. Staff?
The buildout of Brookstone Phase 8 is ahead of schedule, which means that our initial plan for Phase 9 is not keeping up with the amount of lots that are filling. So we anticipate Brookstone Phase 8 will be fully built out by the end of this year, which then would, on our current schedule, would leave a gap year of no development occurring. The property owner would like to move forward under the development agreement. This is an area of the city in which single-family home development has been continuing for several years. Staff recommends approval. It's, it's funded through special assessments. This does also include the ability to plat, design, and bid the extension of Brookstone Drive, which is an additional four homes there that would be funded through a combination of special assessments and likely through the TID. That is an approved, that is in the project plan of the TID in that area, and would also then provide connections to potential future development that that Brookstone Drive would reach in that area. So we do recommend approval in order to continue the buildout of Brookstone. This is the final phase, so unless additional land became available or the developer had another proposal to bring forward, this will bring us to the end of the Brookstone, the current Brookstone buildout subdivision.
Thank you. Any questions for staff? Michelle?
Will this then expedite the potential of American Way meeting up with Harvey?
Harvey Road is scheduled for reconstruction slash upgrading in 2027, so it keeps us on schedule for that, but doesn't necessarily expedite as we wouldn't, we likely wouldn't connect American Way until Harvey Road was brought up to urban standards in order to build an urban intersection. So I think we're still on target for a 2027 connection of American Way and Harvey Road.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, seeing none, can we have a roll call vote, please? Sam, on Resolution 25-47.
Mrs. Schmager?
Aye.
Ms. Quinell?
Aye.
Mr. Coats?
Aye.
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Ms. Kurler?
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0.
Thank you. Our next item is ordinance 1279. This is just the second reading tonight, so Sam, would you please do the second reading?
Ordinance 1279, amending the comprehensive plan, future land use map, parcel number 246-0714-0734-025, City of Lake Mills, Wisconsin.
Thank you. So we have one more reading, third reading, which will be at our next meeting. We do have a representative of Mr. Mangan. I'm here this evening, Chris Carr from Sigma, and he's asked for a few minutes to speak, so if there's no objection, we'll recognize Mr. Carr.
Thank you. Chris Carr, 1300 West Canal, Milwaukee, Wisconsin. The developer had provided some additional information about one of the questions on the challenges of single families, so I believe everyone on this group got it. And then I also provided some additional supplemental information on comprehensive plan consistency for the people that were on the plan commission. We went through this over the last year, but I think it was somewhat new to this group of why this development was consistent with the comp plan, which is a good question to ask, because there's a lot of pieces of that. So we explained some of the big items that actually connect why the comp plan amendment and, and the project we're proposing are consistent with the plan. A couple of things I would, I would just bring up, I won't go through them all. Additional tax base, you know, we heard from the city manager about the lack of new construction. We're estimating this project at 35, 30 to $35 million, so a significant investment in the city of, of Lake Mills, and we're really not adding any additional future infrastructure that has to be taken care of, and that's one of the advantages of a comp plan amendment here, allowing us to use private roads and private utilities. So this does go a long way with cost to, to manage a city. You need new construction and new people to bring it in to help support that, so we do think that's a big part of this project. We talked a little bit about the compatibility of adjacent uses, and just to remind that this is really kind of an isolated part of the city, and the impact, although I understand the residents on the town are here, if you look at the other impacts, the east is wide open, we've got the freeway to the north, there's already multifamily, and then some single-family far to the west along woods. So the actual impact is fairly minor, and if you look at the overall land planning of that area, there is other multifamily and single-family, and it is really a mixed use, so we do think it's consistent with what's going on over there. I think the president here talked about affordable housing. Affordable housing is a challenge right now. I talked to Bob about the rent right now, on those units are about $1,500 to $1,750. I did a little bit of math on what a new house is going for in that area, on some of the new subdivisions, about $500,000, some of the new houses that are supported by TIF. I did a little bit of math on, okay, what, what is a mortgage on that? Because I think one of the commissioners talked about that a resident in there was, would prefer to live in a single-family home. So when I did the math on, if you put $50,000 down, which not everybody has on a 10% mortgage, I came up with taxes of, of about a $4,000 mortgage plus taxes compared in 1,800. So when we talk about housing affordability, multifamily housing does provide, it's a more affordable way to, to bring residents in there, and it's something that's needed. Not everyone can afford the larger upfront payment to buy a house and, and the longer-term maintenance and access. So, so that's why we're here again. I just wanted to provide a little additional information to, to kind of respond to some of the comments or questions that, that were brought up by, by this group last week, or two weeks ago. That's it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Any questions for Mr. Carr this evening?
I'm curious to know about, I know we're talking about the 15.31-acre parcel that's on the southeast, I guess southeast side of the full parcel that Mr. Mangan owns. I saw on the map, there is a 9.54-acre, single-family noted one on the west side of the parcel, and I'm curious to note if that's a part of a larger development plan for Mr. Mangan while we're thinking about this particular parcel.
I don't think so. I'm not sure exactly what you're talking about. Right now, it's really the 15-acre parcel.
To the west of that, across Christopher Drive, Mr. Mangan owns a plat, that is, a platted lot that is about 10 acres in, in area, and it is platted, single-family currently.
Okay. That's not something we've, I've been working with Bob on the parcel for two years, and that's not something we've talked or discussed at all. So there are no current plans to do any of that.
Utilities have to get under, I think there's a creek there. Utilities have to get under or over that area, which is, causes development, development costs on that specific area.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. So again, this is the second reading this evening on ordinance 1279, so we'll move this forward to our next council agenda for the third reading and a decision. Okay, our next agenda item is ordinance 1278 regarding parking, and this is the third reading tonight, so Sam, would you please do the third reading for us?
Ordinance 1278, amending City of Lake Mills ordinance 615-14, parking time limitations. 615-15, no parking zones, and 615-16, school parking zones, City of Lake Mills, Wisconsin.
Thank you. So can we have a, this would be our third reading. Before we have a motion, maybe we could just have a staff summary of this. Waiting for Dwayne to get ready.
Do you want me to speak on the parking ordinance?
So these are kind of in conjunction, parts of these are in conjunction. So there are parts of this ordinance that are changed, that are, that were being made and kind of addition to it, but the, the original impetus was the exploration of sheroes on Madison Street. So if you'd like, the city attorney can give you an overview of the ordinance change, and you can kind of discuss the, the issues in tandem, and then we could have Dwayne give a, an overview of the sheroes, if you'd like to go that direction. So would you like to start with an overview of the ordinance, and then we can move to Dwayne?
Sure, let's start with the ordinance.
Which, are we, which one are we doing?
We're on the ordinance, the parking ordinance right now, and then the sheroes would be, is the next agenda item, but they sort of have some overlap.
Okay. We took the opportunity in redrafting no-parking areas on Madison Street in consideration of the plan commission recommendation and the, oh, excuse me, the Public Works Board recommendation regarding the sheroes on Madison Street, which is proposed as the next item. I worked with the chief of police to... I worked with the chief of police to kind of make some clarification edits throughout the parking code and then presented it to you. It's now at the third reading. I believe we discussed it at the first reading semi-comprehensively. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer. As Drake said, the impetus certainly was establishing no parking on the north side of Madison Street, traveling west, northwest, to afford the ability to install charros.
Are there any questions specifically about the parking ordinance changes? Here.
I have a question on the Madison Street West. I don't see anything noted about the retention or removal of the no parking zones that are noted on the east side that have to deal with restricting their between, I was like nine and noon on Sunday, it's like the church frontage.
Yeah. Everything, what it states is everything from Main Street to the city limits on the north side, the east side, is going to become no parking. There's no way to accommodate both activities, the charrow and parking in that area. The, most of Madison Street beyond like the Arlec right now is no parking on that side of the road. So it's just the portion from Madison Street, passing the churches, passing the middle school. That's changing.
So that, yeah, so that would, so we would
You're losing a significant amount of parking in that area.
Yeah, that would be, I always say it's not north, but it's on the east
It's north and east, right.
Northeast side is where we're removing the parking.
Correct.
My question is, on the west side, I didn't see anything noted in the no parking zones regarding the current, no, there's currently no parking, limited no parking on a Sunday, and I, does that mean we're removing those no parking?
That's not changing. On that side, you can accommodate both the charros and some parking in that area. That's what was recommended by the engineering staff.
Okay. Was our discussion about providing those folks that currently park on the west side, I, and I don't know, I don't know, I am assuming it's for a church drop-off or why we don't allow parking and parking just those limited hours on Sunday, of having all parking on the east side, so the people in the west that are losing their parking actually have now something in front of their house to park? As a compromise to removing
You may be confused about how the ordinance is drafted.
Yeah.
Traveling west is what that W means. The parking is being removed from the east side in that area, from the north and east side in that area.
Right.
There's nothing that's being removed on the south and west side.
Right, but I'm, okay, I'm not, let me just think, I can make myself more clear. My question is, if we, if I support moving, removing when you're going west on the east side, to provide more parking for the people who are losing their parking, could we remove the no parking limited hours on Sunday to allow that we all, everybody can park on the one side, and it makes it longer on that one side?
I don't know that that question has been specifically examined by engineering staff. You, as the legislators of the group, certainly may investigate that, make your decision. That specifically hasn't been approached by engineering staff at this time. The recommendation from the Public Works Board did not consider that.
Okay.
And I actually have a comment on that stretch as well, and I've been thinking about this a lot, and I think I brought it up during the first reading. So I do routinely see vehicles parked, you know, anywhere from a couple to eight or 10, parked in that first stretch from Main Street up to Fremont on the northeast side of West Madison Street. And so that's something I've been wondering about, and I haven't heard from any constituents in that area with any concerns about this change. But I also really took a close look today when I was going by, and the, there's just seven or eight homes on that side. They all have driveways, fairly long driveways, so it doesn't appear that, you know, there's a shortage of ability for them to have off-street parking, if in fact, it may or may not be. Those residents who are parking on the street now, that could also be downtown business, you know, visitors, we don't know exactly who's parking there. But I also re-listened to the Public Works Board, and when they were discussing this, they were talking about charros, and I think Greg Waters, you were on the Public Works Board at that time, because it was a few months back. The board was recommending eliminating the parking on the east side of West Madison Street, beginning at Main, to support bicycle use and to make it even safer for bicycle use, whether or not the charros would require that or not. And so that, that to me, I think, was very compelling. They thought that it would be, just create a safer environment, even if there might have been space to do charros and keep the parking in those first couple of blocks. But their recommendation was specifically to eliminate it all the way down to Main Street. So I thought that was, that was interesting and was kind of compelling.
Yeah, I think there was concern about if there was space for both, an environment where you're having charros with no parking, and then you're adding in parking, and then you're going back to no parking, and kind of encouraging interaction between vehicles and something that you're specifically calling out as a space that if not dedicated to bicycles is at least considered, is announcing that bicycles will be there. And so they looked at several different options, but spacing is a limitation. And it's something that the Public Works Board's grappled with in different areas is the provision of additional bicycle infrastructure or some dedicated markings for bicycles versus the loss of parking. And it's often becomes a choice between increased bicycle safety and loss of parking or retention of parking, but loss of either dedicated bicycle space or bicycle safety where we are specifically marking where they, calling out that they will be there or that they're entitled to be in that space.
Go ahead. See, is there more questions?
Is there anybody else that had a comment, a question?
So we have a separate agenda item specifically authorizing the charros. Do we want to, is anybody prepared to make a motion on amending the parking ordinance, or do you want to discuss the charros first?
Go either way.
Can I, can I ask, was there just on the west side? Okay, now I'm getting my east and west. Yeah, I got the W in the notes, and it says east. Okay, so on the west side where we are allowing parking, did the Public Works Board think about, or did they recognize that we actually have a Sunday block out and talk about opening that up to allow the people who lose it on the east side to have full, like right across from their homes have opportunity to park on the west side as an option?
I don't know if specifically they grappled with that issue. I think that in general, the Public Works Board, through their action, was stating that they are willing to sacrifice.
They're willing to sacrifice?
They are willing to sacrifice parking space for vehicles
For the safety.
in support of increased safety for bicyclists. But specifically, I don't know that they grappled with the question that you've brought up.
Because I, it's not, it's not, it's a very small part of an entire week. It's just Sunday and a certain hours. And so I, I don't know that it's necessarily going to be a challenging scenario given the 99% of the time, but then there's this little block on Sunday where they're all going to have to move. Now, there is that parking lot across the street that I know Arlec utilizes. I think it's privately owned, and I believe they have been graciously allowing, or have some agreement for Arlec members to be able to park there. So I think there are options. I was just, I was just trying to learn about what, what might have been considered and, because I see the trade-off. The materials, I thought, were really well pulled together regarding the pictures to see the distances that are needed and required. That was just super helpful. I was just trying to find a way to balance a little bit more for the removal to find a way on the west side to give as much opportunity for parking.
So this issue kind of bridged two council members, actually. I was on the, on the Public Works at the beginning of this discussion, and they, at that time, approved a bike lane, and then they went back and revised it to charros, and that's when Mr. Coats was on the Public Works. During my time, they were more focused on the northeast side of the parking and didn't really discuss the west side. So I mean, that's something we could come back to or send the Public Works to take a look at it. Do you have anything else to add, Mr. Coats?
No, it's proceeded, it's proceeded the same way since, since that handoff's been made. It hasn't, it hasn't specifically come up like that.
Yeah. The original, when Mr. Waters was on the Public Works Board, the original, there was a recommendation that had been made, but in remeasuring the widths on the street, it was discovered that we could not pursue that option as they had recommended it while maintaining compliance with the necessary spacing of the different elements of the road.
And that was, that was found between the Public Works Board meeting and the proposed council meeting. To look at this ordinance and change it when we went to do the measurements for that change in the parking ordinance is when we noticed that some of the rounding that had occurred from staff affected the decision. That was first brought up at the first council meeting and then revised and decided on the recommendation of the, the charros, and as Ms. Kurler said correctly, the charros and the parking are somewhat independent, but are caused by this. You could do charros without removing the parking. And
You can do charros without removing the parking, but it's the safest way to give the right
But, but, with safety in mind, removing the parking on, as recommended, allows better sight distance for pedestrians. Remember, you have a middle school right there, you have a RFB crossing that I think, and I'll ask Mr. Coats to join in, is, I think that's where the Public Works Board was landing with that recommendation.
Yeah.
I think there was even some mention of just pedestrian use there as well, and just the different modes of transportation, and wanting that to be as safe as possible.
I will add one other comment that, in the conversation. While I don't know for sure, my recollection on that timing for that Sunday on the inbound, let's say the southbound traveling lane in front of the church, is due to the church's desire to have drop-off during services or prior to, prior and after to services, is my recollection.
I was expecting that was the case, although they do have markings that appear as if the, the Candy Cap and other drop-off is actually in the parking lots. And so I think that actually is a lot safer. I'm not surprised that they might have a improved process, but I don't want to dwell on, I just was asking if, just to give, and we can be, I think it can be a conversation at a, if we run into a pain point, to reconsider it, but I was just asking if it had been discussed why, why it was or wasn't on here, and then knowing that it may be an option if we, it could bring up in the future if we have a pain point with citizens there. Thank you. Can I, before we move to charros, though, can I ask another question on the speeds, on the zones? Sure. I was curious, just curious, why the, there have been several conversations since I've been, not really conversations, but mentions regarding Sandy Beach Road parking and the concerns about safety, in particular with the large trucks and trailers along there, and our current no parking zone states it's only from Main Street to 137 Sandy Beach Road. And I believe we will be having the conversation as we talk about the parking lot and infrastructure that that, this will come up, but we have it on the agenda today. So I was curious what, if there had been a discussion, or if that was just, we were just doing a line item to men, not called the bowling alley, and we're just refreshing the current markings, if there had
It would, it's simply refreshing to use a narrowest path that
Yeah, okay. So that was, so I, I feel the Sandy Beach Road parking situation is unsafe, and so it's something that I feel would be important for us to address, whether it's, I don't have, like, I don't have the Public Works Board's thoughts on it, so I don't know that this is the right time, but I would, I feel it's important for us to have a conversation about it at some time when it's appropriate.
I'm really glad you brought that up, and I actually did talk to Chief, Chief Schroeder yesterday about this very same question. And I think as we are moving forward and are going to be talking more about Sandy Beach redevelopment and perhaps whether we monetize parking, that we're going to need to dig into that a little bit more, like what are the parking uses along there? What are the traffic safety concerns, and what, if anything, do we want to do differently? I don't feel like I'm ready
Okay.
to know what the right answer is tonight or to amend that and, you know, eliminate parking all the way down to the lake on Sandy Beach Road at this time. But I, I agree with you. I think that's something we should keep in the back of our minds and be prepared to look at this ordinance provision again in the future as we move forward with, with park redevelopment. Greg?
So before we move on to charros, let's go ahead and divide this out, so I'll make a recommendation for approval on Ordinance 1278.
That's a motion for adoption of Ordinance 1278.
Correct.
I'll second.
Okay, so we have a motion by Mr. Waters, seconded by Ms. Schmager to adopt Ordinance 1278. Any further discussion? Okay, seeing none, Sam, would you please call the roll on Ordinance 1278?
Ms. Quettner?
Aye.
Mr. Coats?
Aye.
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Ms. Kurler?
Aye.
Mrs. Schmager?
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0?
Thank you. So our next agenda item is Resolution 25-41. Sam, would you read that for us, please?
City Council Resolution 25-41, authorizing the painting of the charros on Madison Street.
I move to approve City Council Resolution 25-41, authorizing the painting of charros on Madison Street. Second.
Okay, so we have a motion by Ms. Quettner, seconded by Ms. Schmager. And Dwayne has a set of slides all queued up for us.
We have a PowerPoint that we can probably go through pretty quickly because of the prior motion. If you want me to go back, please let me know, but I'll try to go through this quickly so we can get to the charrow portion. Next slide, Dave. This is just to show typically, we're looking for 11-to-12-foot lanes, a bike lane next to a curb line, and I'll note the difference between the curb itself, which is concrete, and the asphalt, that bike lane needs to be measured from that interface between what I call the flag, which is the concrete asphalt interface. It needs to be at least four foot minimum. It's highlighted on the right side. That's with, without parking. Next slide, please. This highlighted area is showing what happens when there is a parking lane. Then that bike lane needs to be at least five foot wide, but you'll note that in the parking lanes, for instance, you can actually measure to the face of the curb, which is that vertical face. Again, looking at 11-to-12-foot lanes. Again, this information is from the Wisconsin DOT, FDM, Facilities Development Manual. Next slide, Dave. Some information, just to compare, this is cross-sections from South Main Street where there already are bike lanes. Next slide, Dave. This slide in particular shows that parking lane on one side with a five-foot bike lane, and on the opposite side, a four-foot bike lane next to that curb. In this case, if you have parking on one side, just to be quick, you need at least 39 feet of asphalt. So when you look at the spreadsheet, in the areas along the length of Madison Street, that's where we, where we had the discrepancy in distance, and that width was just not there to provide this option. Next slide, Dave. So this were the four options that we looked at, and you'll notice that the measurements on each of the four options when we looked at this use different measuring distances based on whether or not there was a parking lane or a bike lane next to the curb. So you'll see measurements that are based on face-to-face versus flag-to-flag versus flag-to-face, depending on how many parking lanes there are. Next slide, Dave. So we're looking at this area in yellow along Madison Street. Again, this is from Main Street to Pine Street, which is the city limits. The next slide, Dave. So whatever are options in that So whatever are our options in that first block? Since you've already made that decision to go no parking, you had two proposed options that were available at the last two bullet points. You could do two 11 foot traffic lanes with eight foot parking on both sides, but you would not be able to do the park, the bicycle lanes. Or you could propose two 11 foot traffic lanes with two four foot bicycle lanes, which could only be extended from this point to Fremont Street. At that point, bike lanes were not feasible. The width was just not there, even without, even with removing all of the parking. Next slide. This slide is really the same as the slide before. Next slide, Dave. And as I just mentioned, as you extend beyond Fremont Street, the street just becomes too narrow and the only options at that point become a shero situation. Next slide, Dave. Again, I think for the next two slides, no bicycle lane options are available, which sheroes can be done, which I'll then, so, next slide, Dave. And one more, Dave. Thanks. So this is Shared Roadways and Urban Streets, 15.5.1, shows a detailed drawing for streets, residential streets and communities for sheroes. Next slide, Dave. And here is the detail, and this is what a shero is. It's really an arrow with a bicycle symbol. If you recall, I think the last time they were used in the city was around 2017. It was prior to the South Main Street reconstruction. After a chip seal program, sheroes were installed to provide indications and notice of bike lanes from the Drummond Trail to downtown. Those were then replaced when Main Street, South Main Street was reconstructed and the bike lanes were installed as part of that project. I'll note on this standard detailed drawing from the DOT, there are two, two ways these sheroes can be installed. One is with parking, one is without. I would anticipate that even though the parking painting is shown on the bottom of the page, that wouldn't be the case as typically the city does not mark their parking lanes. However, it does dictate for public works staff where that location is, either 11 feet from the curb line or four foot from the curb line. Again, with a little bit more width, which was just provided by the last motion, with the last item, that side heading outbound from the city, northbound, with no parking on that side of the road, the shero will be about four feet from the curb and depending on how, if we center the center line in the remainder of the width, that provides a little bit more room and safety for those bicyclists that are traveling in that shared area. Again, this is not a bike lane, but a shared use lane. Next slide, Dave. This is just a summary of what we talked about earlier. The Public Works Board in May recommended removing the east side parking from West Madison from Main to Pine and to add shero pavements. Next slide, Dave. I think we can move on. I think we can wrap it up there. Everything else really has been already discussed in the parking discussion on the previous item. If there's any questions for me, I'd be more than happy to try and answer them.
I don't have a question, but I just want to thank the Streets Department and the Public Works Board for recognizing this opportunity to incorporate the bike lanes and, and thinking about our long range bicycle plan while we're doing maintenance work on Madison Street. And it's good timing to put this all together. So hopefully this will, our actions tonight will be able to be implemented yet this year. Greg.
Yeah, thank you. I supported the, the bike lane when it was first introduced, but now that this new information's come out, I think it's, makes sense to be consistent throughout the, the whole route and use the sheroes all the way instead of having bike lane and then switching to sheroes. So I, I support this and also recognize that our comprehensive plan survey showed a large amount of support for pedestrians and bicycle traffic within Lake Mills. So this kind of helps us move along that, that way as, as well as our bicycle plan. So, so thank you.
Great, thank you. Any other comments or questions?
I actually think we have to be ready if, we had one citizen offer some support at public comment, but if they're looked upon as being very favorable, this particular set of sheroes, there may be some interest in us or in Public Works actually thinking about where they also may be beneficial and appropriate based on the traffic or circumstances. So I, I think this work was really well done and timely. The more, more might be coming, I'm thinking.
Possibly.
Okay, seeing no further discussion, we have a motion and a second. So can we have a roll call vote, please, on resolution 25-41?
Mr. Koets?
Aye.
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Ms. Kurler?
Aye.
Ms., Mrs. Schmager?
Aye.
Ms. Quinow?
Aye.
Motion passes five zero.
Thank you. Our next agenda item is ordinance 1277 and this is the third reading tonight. So Sam, would you please do the third reading for us?
Ordinance 1277 and ordinance annexing territory to the city of Lake Mills, Jefferson County, Wisconsin.
Thank you. Would someone like to make a motion?
I, I will make a motion. I lost my internet, so I couldn't read the, I would like to make a motion to approve ordinance 1277, the petition for annexation from Lake Mills Area School District, parcels as noted.
Second.
We have a motion by Ms. Schmager, seconded by Mr. Waters. We have discussed this, had a couple of previous readings. Any summary or anything, Drake, that you want to provide?
This is a future location of a bus barn. They will be connecting to some city services as far as utilities out there. So that then requires the annexation, which staff recommends approval of. If there's any questions, we're happy to answer them.
Any questions or discussion this evening? Seeing none, Sam, would you please call the roll on ordinance 1277?
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Ms. Kurler?
Aye.
Mrs. Schmager?
Aye.
Ms. Quinow?
Aye.
Mr. Koets?
Aye.
Motion passes five zero.
Thank you. Okay, our next agenda item is a resolution 25 dash, let me find my place here, 25-48. Sam, would you please read that title for us?
City Council Resolution 25-48, directing the city manager to evaluate and present options to the city council for the designation of Catlin Drive as right or left turn only onto South Main Street.
Thank you. Why don't we have a staff overview first and then see if there's a motion?
This was, a draft of this resolution was sent to me by Mr. Koets following a discussion by the city council previously. This would allow us to begin planning for it and to bring you what the actual look of that would, would be and any associated costs. We would also, at that point, discuss with the school district as well as contact the DOT to ensure that there's no issues with the interaction with the state highway and then bring it for you for final approval of the, of the designation in the necessary form. That is essentially the process that we'd go through. If there's any questions, I'll do my best to answer them. Otherwise, Mr. Koets as well played a help, helped in drafting this, so.
Thank you, Mr. Koets. Is there anything you'd like to add before we open up discussion?
No, this was something that Mr. Daley and I worked, worked together to figure out the, the right way to phrase it. I initially had, had some thoughts in mind, which weren't necessarily quite, you know, quite the way to go. So this is what we would need to do to, to, to make that change. And it's a simple change that's been, come up as part of the discussions before about taking that street, which is, which can go straight across Main Street now and just turning it to a left or right turn only.
Thank you. So someone can make a motion if they're interested or we can move into a discussion. Michelle?
Did you have your hand up?
Yeah, I was going to make a motion.
Okay.
I move to approve City Council Resolution 25-48, directing the city manager to evaluate and present options to the city council for the designation of Catlin Drive as right or left turn on to, only onto South Main Street.
Mr. Koets will second.
Okay, we have a motion by Ms. Quinow and seconded by Mr. Koets. Discussion.
I have a question.
Oh, Michelle, yes.
I realized I needed to get it passed or get a, anyway, I was wondering if the Catlin Drive as right or left or right and left? So I know that Catlin Drive, you could go right or left, but I'm wondering if that would be made to go right and left?
I think the way I was understanding it, it's you could either turn right or you could turn left, but you could not go straight. Was that the, is that the intention? Okay.
Motorists would have to choose whether to go left or right.
They could do either one, but they can't go straight.
Correct.
I could see your interpretation, the way it's worded, that it's suggesting we're making a decision that you can only go one direction, right?
Yes.
You can't go left and right.
Well, right, no, like there's one arrow.
So if you're coming out of Catlin, you only can go right with no option to go left ever. That's what you're, or that's your, that or you were asking, but I can see why you made that interpretation.
That's why I said, is it right or left or right and left only?
The intention is that you'd have the choice to go left or right.
Either, either right.
Right or left.
Either right or left.
Not one, not only one, but both.
Okay. Okay, the verbiage on that was a little confusing, but as long as we all have the right idea, no pun intended, that we can, that that makes sense to me now.
Okay, I think that's, that's good clarification. Thanks. Any other discussion? Greg?
Yeah, as I, as I read over these four motions, this one and the next three that are coming up, I guess I have some concerns why they're well intended. Traffic studies do not support these actually. And if there is a problem here, all we're doing is moving the problem, I guess. Right now, traffic queues up on Caitlin Drive to get out into Main Street. These people are trying to get to Ferry as the people on Milton suggest. All they're going to do is get on Main Street, go down to Lake Park Place and then cut up to Ferry. So we're moving the problem to Lake Park Place. Also, now traffic is going to queue on Main Street and I can tell you that Main Street's already full in the morning, in the afternoon when school gets out. I have a driveway and I wait over five minutes sometimes to get out onto Main Street. And going towards downtown, this could worsen that problem. Also, how does it affect emergency vehicles when Main Street is a main thoroughfare? Now we're queuing traffic on Main Street instead of on Caitlin Drive. So I have concerns with a bit of all four of these, to be honest with you.
Thank you, Mr. Waters. I'd like to add, I guess, to your comments, one, I agree with you on just the question of where would we be pushing the problem? I would hope if this is adopted that that would be analyzed and addressed and that we would receive, you know, we could very well receive a recommendation back that says not to do this if that is simply going to move a problem or create, create a problem. I'm not, I think you also said, and I would tend to agree with this, that it's, it's, we have a group of passionate residents from Milton Street. We don't have traffic data to indicate that there's a serious problem here that needs to have something done to address it. So I'm still not sure why we need this solution, but it also seems like it would only address things in the afternoon, right? Because if people are coming, if people are coming on Milton Street to go to school when, you know, it, it seems like it's only, would only be addressing one time period of the day if in fact there is a problem with school traffic. So I guess in addition to all those, my, my other thought would be that, you know, we, in our strategic plan, we really seek to involve our citizens, which they've been very engaged and given us lots of important ideas on this from the Milton Street neighborhood. But we also seek to engage our citizen boards and I, I would want to see any or all of these that we might be contemplating tonight to be reviewed by the Public Works Board and to get their input if we do adopt anything this evening. So I guess those are my, my thoughts on what, on this item.
Did these go to Public Works before they came here? No? Okay.
Are there any other comments or discussion at this time? Mary?
So I have, we have public safety as one of our top strategic priorities and so I am really interested in making sure that we keep that in the forefront. We may not have, I would say a lot of, I'm a big data person, as you all know, but a lot of hard technical data, but I can tell you by observation, school pass periods, we are solving a school pass period. So it's September, well, it's actually August because Lakeside started and you can tell immediately, I live on South Ferry, the traffic is very fast and there's, the volume is 10, 10, 20, I don't know what the fold is compared to off school time periods and off school, like months and time periods. So I feel as if, it's anecdotally, but it's observation wise, it's soft data, that we, we have something to solve. I, I don't know if this is the right solution. I would be interested in learning more about a right or left turn. I don't know the safety statistics. What I've read is that when you pull onto a main feeder leader, that often your, your traffic patterns force, since you're all in a row, you're going slow, you're in bumper to bumper, it forces a different kind of behavior than when you're on back road, off side streets. And so moving high school students onto the main area, is it only for one block? I don't know that we know. I'm, I would be interested, I'm, I'm big on pilots. Can you try, it'd be interesting to see what they study. Could you do something without doing a permanent? Can you do something? I'm big on the big, huge cones and make a right left. Is there something you can do so we can learn before formally creating a new problem somewhere else? So I'm, I'm supportive of learning. I don't, I, and I, and I think Public Works would be, and even if we, the citizens kind of weighing in on a solution that we could entertain once we learn more to try to solve the problem. I, I do think we have a volume problem on those past periods and, and I am worried about long, like it moving somewhere else. So I guess I don't, we don't know until we try something. But I don't, I don't know, I don't know what it'll be, if it'll be permanent, if we could do something on a temporary basis to learn. Michelle, you were going to say something. I see you're raising, you're over there wanting to jump in.
I, I hear what you're saying and we need to look at the verbiage of this resolution. We are directing the city manager to evaluate and present options. We're not solving the problem right now. We are asking the city manager to come and bring us the options. I think if we were to look at, well, first of all, traffic studies cost money and we don't need to spend money to understand that there's a, a problem there. As far as your comment, Mr. Waters, as far as like how it would affect Lake Park Place, one thing I can say is that they have to turn left and turning left means you have to stop. And if you have to stop, you have to wait. So as far as I'm concerned, when they're turning right to expedite leaving Catlin Drive, but then if they want to take Lake Park Place, they're going to have to wait to turn. So I'm not, I'm not sure that I agree with you that we are going to disseminate this problem, even though previously I had said something to that effect. With the option of putting it where they're, they have to take a left or a right, I think then we are giving less option for them to take their traffic and speed it across. giving less option for them to take their traffic and speed it across. Because as far as I can see, thinking like a teenager, leaving Catlin Drive going straight, you wanna go really fast to get past the two lanes of traffic, right? But if we're, if we're, if we're preventing that, even that option, they have to turn left or right, there, it's not, we're not gonna have that speeding, like we would if we kept it open to Milton Street.
So Drake, I have a question for you. This resolution proposes the use of, of up to $5,000 in council contingency funds. Would that be your recommendation in order to support doing this kind of analysis? That, that, that you would not have the in-house expertise to be able to do this kind of analysis?
Yeah, we would engage with a traffic engineer, to the extent that we could at the, at that level of funding. So we will have, I think that trials are difficult with traffic control measures, because we want to have, we wanna comply with the Uniform Traffic Control Device Standards signage. Part of traffic controls are influencing motorists' behavior, and so changing back and forth can be difficult in that regard, but we could certainly explore options there. I think that when we look at the traffic counts that we've seen, neither road would be classified as overcapacity as far as volume. West Lake Park Place, though, I would indicate, I would mention, is classified as a collector within the city of Lakemills, so it is designed or anticipated to have a higher traffic volume, be able to handle a higher traffic volume. Milton Street is considered a local, just a local road, local residential road, and so in, in that regard, the two are analyzed differently as far as volumes and, you know, what is considered acceptable or problematic. So yes, I think we would need, I would wanna have some resources to engage with the experts and, with a traffic engineer, in order to discuss what we're, what we're considering doing, so that we can provide you with the best information.
Thank you, I appreciate that. I know, Mr. Koots, you had brought that up in our previous discussion and asking about funding, and I think, you know, we've, we have, in my opinion, erred in the past in not providing sufficient support, like for example, in our ad hoc force committee, we didn't have any financial support or additional staffing support, and that required then a lot of staff time to be involved in supporting that committee, and we also, again, in my opinion, didn't get all the information that we needed to make a decision on that policy. So I, I would want any effort like this to be successful, so I appreciate the, the inclusion of some funds. I'm gonna make a motion to amend Resolution 25-48 to direct this to the Public Works Board, rather than the city manager. So everywhere in this resolution where it says city manager, I think that could be replaced with Public Works Board, so we would ask them to work on this and bring their recommendations back. So I think that appears maybe three times. So wherever it says directing the city manager, that would be amended to say directing the Public Works Board. Does that make sense, Dan? Okay. So that's my proposed amendment to 25-48. Second from Mr. Waters? Okay, thank you. Is there any discussion on that?
The, and this is kind of going back to some of the Mr. Waters' comments and others about the, the group of four of them that are, that are coming up here. I looked at them more as two groups of two. The, when, the discussion in our June meeting, I think it was June 17th, there was a lot of discussion about a lot of things, and this resolution and the ordinance for the speed limit specifically, I was looking at those two as one grouping. Those were two potential solutions to, to what was, to, to the request. It may be the right solution, it may be the wrong solution, either one, one or both of them, but I thought both of these could be implemented much more cost-effectively. I do agree with what Mr. Waters said about the traffic studies that have been done there don't support the, the volume doesn't support some of the other solutions we were talking about for sure, the speed tables, speed humps, speed bumps. I've watched that, I've watched that meeting back many times. The, this, because this is the one that's on the table now, this specific motion, I thought was something that could be done, that was much more cost-effective, and did address some of the concerns we heard from Milton Street residents about, not necessarily speed, but the sudden acceleration, the, the hurrying up and going across there, which if you're moving down the street and now you're crossing one lane of traffic instead of two, still could happen, but you don't, you don't have quite as much of a running start at it. So I thought this was worth bringing to the council and, and voting on for that reason. All four of these, we can vote yes or no, it doesn't hurt my feelings one way or the other, and I know the amendment now is to go to Public Works Board and see if there's more support there, and I, I understand why that request is being made too, but that's, that's kind of why we wound up with, wound up at where we did with these, so.
Thank you for that, appreciate it.
Yeah.
Michelle?
I'm curious about what, what the purpose of going back to Public Works, did I say that right? Instead of the city manager, just because I feel like if this is a, if this is some, something that we really think needs to happen quickly, I would feel like going to Public Works and being ruminated and decided over, and then it would be taken to city manager anyway, why, why we can't just assume that the city manager is going to do the job well.
My amendment is not, is not based on thinking that the city manager couldn't do the work, or give us the options, but that I wanna get input from the Public Works Board. I don't see it as time-sensitive, that it's, I, I don't see an urgency. I, I'm sure the, the folks on Milton Street may disagree, but I think there's time for this to be vetted through our citizen board and, and get, get their input.
I'm just wondering, how long is it gonna be until Milton Street is complete?
Through, um, by, by contract, substantial completion is this Friday. They're behind schedule.
Apparently not.
They do have some rain days.
Okay.
I, well, I could better answer that question next week, but three weeks from Friday, I think if we, I think, three weeks from Friday would be, would, would match with where they are at, based on the original schedule. The origi, there was, if I recall correctly, the last time this discussed, there was a motion adopted by the city council to place the speed board back on Milton Street after completion and after school had started, so we are still, we are still planning on that. As far as timing, whether you send it to the Public Works Board or assign it to me, there is only, I only have so much capacity to, to, to bring you another item. If you tell me this is your top priority, then I'll shelve other things, but right now there are five, six items of high importance to the council that are currently being worked on, in addition to our capital and operating budget for the fall, so I would, I would need to push something else. So this isn't something that's turning around, that I can turn around imminently for you unless you tell me to drop other things until this is completed.
I guess where my brain is at, is that school's going to start, and so if I'm hearing you say that we're going to have provisions in place to keep Milton Street less likely to be a, a drag race, because it's gonna be nice and beautifully blacktopped, I, I'm okay with putting it toward the plan, or Public Works, with the understanding that it does need to be expedited. I don't wanna put the onus on you if there's, obviously, that you've got some things on your plate, especially with getting us toward budget season, and it's the, the, the things that we're going to put in place to keep Milton Street safe are only gonna last so long. So that's why I'm saying I would like to reconsider the idea of having it go to Public Works, not to, not to diminish the citizen board by any means, it's just, for me, it would be, it would take longer in the process.
Well, we have an amendment on the table, and we haven't voted on it yet, so we haven't made that decision. With all due respect, I, I disagree that there's a problem that needs to be solved urgently. So I think we're trying to be responsive to concerns that citizens have raised, and considering four different proposals that Mr. Koots has prepared for us in response to those, and so right now we have an amendment on the table to direct this assignment to the Public Works Board. So is there any further discussion on that proposed amendment?
I have a question. With this amendment, would the Public Works Board be, be able to utilize the $5,000 in council contingency funds to work with an expert? So they would take on the task, as this is defined, to do, to, to do actually the analysis regarding how Catlin could work?
Based on the way it's written, yes.
Based on the way it's written, I think, right, that final, that be it further resolved would be unchanged, so it would still be the, city manager would have the discretion to allow up to $5,000 for the Public Works Board's use.
For use of firm, okay, thank you.
It would be used in support of their effort for the evaluation of the request.
Yep, thank you, okay. I just wanted to be clear.
Any further discussion on the proposed amendment? Okay, Sam, can we have a roll call vote, please, on the proposed amendment to Resolution 25-48?
I apologize, but I had my mic off. Ms. Curler?
Aye.
Mrs. Schmager?
Aye.
Ms. Quinow?
No.
Mr. Koots?
Aye.
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Motion passes for one.
Thank you. So now we have Resolution 25-48 as amended, to refer to the Public Works Board. Is there any further discussion on the resolution? Okay, seeing none, can we have a roll call vote, please, on Resolution 25-48 as amended?
Mrs. Schmager?
Aye.
Ms. Quinow?
No.
Mr. Koots?
Aye.
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Ms. Curler?
Aye.
Motion passes for one.
Thank you. Okay, let's see, our next agenda item is Resolution 25-49. Sam, would you please read that title for us?
City Council Resolution 25-49, directing the city manager to include analysis of traffic warrants considered, considered during the design of the road construction projects when requesting authorization to let the project forbid.
Thank you. Drake or Mr. Koots, do you wanna summarize this one?
Yeah, I, I'll, I'll go with this one. As far as the question of why not Public Works, maybe this one was kind of getting at, at that. This one and the next one were, the two that I felt were kind of trying to address the long-term, bigger picture goals that the council may have had. There was, in that June meeting, there were many questions about many different aspects, and there were people, different people wanted to emphasize different things at different times throughout the ninety to a hundred minute long discussion that we had on it. Because the council is, was not overly familiar with the process, the intent of Resolution 25-49 is to let the engineers and then Public Works Board go through the normal process, and as they're going through the normal process, take stock of the, the different warrants that are evaluated, all the different safety measures that are, that are considered, or you know, weighed out, however you want, whatever the right term is for that, but just to take stock as they're going through and then make it, you know, make sure that that gets reported out as part of the next project, that these are the different evaluations that we did. I don't know if it's the most elegant solution to the problem or not, it probably isn't the most elegant, I'll say that, but I thought it was a good starting point, because there was a lot of questions, and I wasn't sure if all of the council members even were talking about going in the same direction with some of the different directives that they had. So I thought this would be a good starting point for the council. And I think, and I thought it was worth bringing to the council to vote on, I may be right or wrong, but we can vote this up or down.
Thank you. I appreciate you drafting it, and I, I agree with you, there was a lot of questions from the council at our meeting a couple of months ago on this, and what I really like about this, is it's, it's really kind of just transparency, I mean, I think it's work that our city engineers are already doing as they're designing projects, and so it's just making sure that that information is, is available as we're looking at these projects when they come to us. I had just a clarifying question. Greg, would this also be then, so when road reconstruction projects are brought forward, they do, they're, the normal processes that they run through the Public Works Board, so would you be expecting then that the Public Works Board would also see that the traffic warrants as a part of the package that they receive when they're?
Yes.
Okay, great. So it would be through the whole process of, of that board as well?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments?
I have a question. I'm, I would like to learn more about why in the third whereas, second and third whereas, is we are specifically calling out traffic calming measures, and not, not considering, I would say, location-specific roadway safety measures? So traffic calming is one of many elements of a road design framework, so you look at, you know, are there blind spots, do you have stormwater management? I mean, there's like, I mean, it's very complex, and there are a lot of very critical elements, and so I'm curious why just traffic calming measures were called out, and because I feel that, you know, there's pedestrian, I mean, you, you look at who's on the, what kind of, what kinds of things are on the road, people, bikes, what kinds of vehicles, how many, do they have blind spots, what about what's on the road, is there a daycare, are there big, like whatever, you look at, assess the whole thing as a part of the big plans, the traffic warrants plan, and so I just was trying to understand why just traffic calming was going to be called out as a category, when there's, because then I, do we need a resolution if we wanna learn more about, like pedestrian, pedestrian safety measures that might be unique to a particular roadway? Or do we, I was just, I was trying to understand the, I guess, the rationale behind resolutions. I feel like that's the role of a great road planning program, and we missed, we missed this one, but a great learning opportunity to say, ooh, this, this calming was important to the residents, and we didn't have that in our radar screen in assessing Milton Street when we were designing it. But I, I'm just curious about just traffic calming and the consideration of a broader set of safety measures.
Traffic calming, I believe, is the term that got used, because this, again, was that walking the line between a specific case and a, and a general case, and that may have gotten lost in translation there. Traffic calming seemed to be a, a obvious traffic safety piece. Traffic calming seemed to be a, a obvious traffic safety piece. There certainly could be more and if we wanted to amend it and say traffic safety instead of just traffic calming, that I'd be fine with that. I don't know that there is a, I don't have a great reason other than that was a term that was being used. And we were talking about both specific and general for, during that meeting, so.
Maybe what I'm asking is, do we need a resolution? When you are, when I see management making a decision about a specific, unique scenario, there have, there are a lot of instances, like you drive around the city where you see something different based on the circumstance. And it gets brought up to say, this differs from our, it's like the 80/20 rule. This differs from 80% of all of the scenarios look like this, but this one needs to be different because of this reason? I feel like that has been a conversation that has happened and that this kind of is like a resolution describing to make that happen. And so maybe I'm confused on why a resolution would be?
I think it's that the?
Does that make, I don't know, like I'm just trying to get my head wrapped around on why this is here.
I think it's the city council announcing that they have a special interest in a specific component of roadway design. So when the road, when a roadway gets designed, a number of different design features are evaluated. For example, if you go back to the original budget for Milton Street, you would have seen a line item for stormwater infrastructure. When we get into design, it's determined that the actual stormwater infrastructure pipe, you know, the infrastructure that's going into the ground isn't necessary because of the, because of how stormwater is being managed on the area and therefore that gets dropped from the, from the design. But it's included in the budget because the city has a longstanding policy of installing stormwater infrastructure where none exists and where it is necessary. We have a pedestrian plan that we compare against when we are looking at, are there gaps in the sidewalk network that are identified in the sidewalk plan? In which that should be included in where they don't already exist in the reconstruction of a street. We have a bicycle, a bicycle plan that we compare against when we're designing a roadway. There are traffic counts and speed counts that are evaluated as to what may be necessary on a, on a specific street. This is essentially, the resolution is essentially telling the staff that when we ask Public Works Board to let a project to bid, or specifically calling out what we, that can, you know, what we evaluated in that sense, even if the design doesn't, even if during the design process, those markers, those metrics weren't met to be included in the design of it. So we don't, we, right now, we don't go to Public Works Board and say, we're not, we're not designing something, right? Because it's not included in what the standard design, design would be. We focus on what the design of the road entails and what improvements are being made. The, you know, opinion of probable cost at that time, whether we're doing full reconstruction of sidewalks, spot replacement of sidewalks. In this, in this instance, tree protection was a, a focus on the design of the street and why certain decisions were made on relocation of where water main was going, where sewer main was going, where temporary waters, how temporary water service would be provided, things of that nature. So this is essentially creating a stead, a, a standing policy of the city council that we will present always what the traffic counts are when we've, that we've measured and what the 85th percentile speed is that we've measured and how that interacts with what was or was, when you take it in conjunction with the next resolution, what options exist to essentially overbuild to what the, the, that may not have been warranted by the traditional warrant system. If the council wanted to go above and beyond that and still install something else, what are those options that are included in, in the design of it? So there's a, a whole host of things that are evaluated during a road reconstruction, including widening, narrowing, you know, to meet certain policies that have been adopted by the, the city council. And not, you know, I can't, you know, what pieces of those are being specifically called out to the Public Works Board? Are they simply assuming that we're following the, the policies that have been set before, prior to that project coming up? This tells us, we're going to include specific things in the presentation to Public Works Board always, whether or not they were ultimately incorporated into the recommended design that's before them.
I'll go. Let you have something else.
Well, I do, but let me just, let me pause and you go right ahead and I'll come back.
All right, thank you. Go ahead, Greg. I've been fortunate to be on Public Works for the last two terms and, and it was nice to, to see how they go about their business. And we have a very professional staff that, that works on our street projects. And, and public safety is one of the things that they look at when, when they do this. So I think it's interesting that Greg brought out, these two motions are a little bit separate. I agree with them in that regard. I think that these two motions are adding some red tape, they're inflating budgets and probably increasing the time that staff will have to spend on the project. So I don't support these two motions.
You're referring to this one and the next one on the agenda? Okay, thanks.
Well, I was asking again, I, I'm maybe in the same place because I, I feel, like I, I feel like the, when you approach a, a new project, you ask yourself, like here, here's the common, the policies that are required here. But you do, you do look to say, what is different about this? So does it have a curve in it? Or was there a big tree, might have to do something different with the sidewalk? I feel like looking, and through a safety lens is important, but I think just in general through utilization lens and what's unique. And so I, that's kind of where I'm coming out, is why would a resolution specific to traffic calming is only one small, I think, one piece of a very complex set of items? And so I would be interested, but I think that's what's already happening, which is why I was just not sure we need a resolution. I would be just making sure that when we look at each project, if there is something unique that, that management and staff knows, they have the, they should be bringing forward what is unique and solutions to solve it, which could be less money or more money depending on what the situation specifically is. And I wouldn't carve out traffic calming as a requirement because it may, I don't think traffic calming fits on every project. So I think we are creating a subject that isn't necessary in every situation.
So this motion is attempting to thread the needle between the two extremes of the last two council members to speak. I, I know that this is adding to the design burden. This was an attempt to try and minimize what, what would be added because we could go so far as to, you know, all have to get civil engineering, you know, degrees to understand what, what gets reported out. There's, this was an attempt to meet some, you know, go somewhere in between those two. And the, yeah.
So we don't have a motion on the table and I'm hearing some concerns about whether this resolution is needed or not. Does anyone want to make a motion on Resolution 25-49?
I, I would move to adopt City Resolution 25-49.
And is there a second? Okay, there's no second, so then I guess we don't move forward with 25-49.
Yep.
That's all I need to do, right? Okay, so the next agenda item is City Council Resolution 25-50. Sam, would you read that title for us, please?
City Council Resolution 25-50, directing the city manager to include traffic calming options to be considered when seeking authorization to let a street construction project to bid above and beyond those dictated by the traffic warrants.
And this one was meant as a bit of a companion to the last one, saying with all these evaluations that were done, what would, what would it look, this was an attempt to try and make it, what would it look like if we went the other way with one of those choices? The, the, the one thing in response to, to the last thing that you, that you said there, Mary, we're, when someone, with Milton Street, there is nothing that would have, there's nothing unique about that street that would have triggered some sort of a red flag that means, oh, we have to do this. Now, that's why we wound up with the street that we did. It's tough to, this, this has come out, Drake said it a moment ago, too. You can't give a report on everything you did, you did, don't include. That would be, that would be an infinitely long report. So this is, this was just trying to say, take, take the, the previous resolution and go a step further and say, what would it look like if something extra was included? Seeing as how the last resolution was not adopted, at this point, I will, I, I'd like to propose adoption of City Council Resolution 25-50.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Koots. Is there a second? Okay, hearing no second on Resolution 25-50, we'll close that item out. So our next agenda, thank you, Greg, for working on these. And I know, can't imagine listening to the previous meeting multiple times and then trying to figure out what, you know, might, might be a consensus. I appreciate all the, the recommendations that you brought forward. So the fourth one that you have worked on for us is Ordinance 1280. So this would be the first reading of that tonight. So let's go ahead, Sam, and, and please do the first reading of Ordinance 1280.
Ordinance 1280, amending City of Lake Mills Code 615-4, speed limits.
First reading?
This is the first reading only. Is there any questions or discussion, any statements that staff would like to make at this point?
It's within your authority to drop the speed limit by, you can, you can drop it by 10 miles per hour on the street. It's currently 25, so it's within your authority to bring it to 15 miles per hour. That's done through the ordinance that's in front of you tonight. If a new speed limit is instituted, then it would be standard practice for us to have increased enforcement in that area while motorists are adapting to the new regulation that is in, in front of them. I will note that, you know, a new, when we're talking about traffic warrants, right, that we've had that conversation for, a change in speed limit changes success metric, right? So right now, when you looked at the traffic study that was done and you looked at the 85th percentile speed, they do exceed 15 miles per hour. They didn't exceed the 25 mile per hour speed limit. And so that, as we evaluate through the course of our normal day-to-day business, as we evaluate, you know, traffic safety options, the success metric has, would, would change on Milton Street. And so therefore, that could trigger something that was not warranted by the, the speeds, the speed study that was done prior to the reconstruction project. And so that may provide you with additional information as, as future evaluations occur on the street or future projects are considered. Most of the streets in the City of Lake Mills are at the 25 mile per hour limit. The city, the city council certainly can consider wide-ranging policy on what speeds the city council wants to see. You've heard comment on the 20 is enough, you know, project as well. There are municipalities that are looking to reduce speed limits on roads systemically throughout the, throughout their communities. Certainly something the council can grapple with. Fully within your authority to adjust the speed limit on this street to 15 miles per hour. And then if the city council would like, in the future, an evaluation on speeds, what the goal is with speeds in the community, certainly something the council could choose to deliberate on as well in the future.
Thank you. Any questions or discussion at this time on first reading? I am just going to make a couple of comments. I know we're not voting on this tonight, but going back to our meeting from a couple of months ago, the data that we received does not indicate a speeding problem on Milton Street. There's been one crash in three years and we don't have any new data yet. So at a minimum, I feel like this would, would be premature for us to be acting on this without any new data. And I'm not sure what the justification is at this point. This, as far as I can tell from looking at our ordinance, this would be the first street that we would be reducing to 15 miles per hour. So I, if this stays on the table, I, I would like to, you know, have some more information to explain why it would be justified to lower this if we don't have data to, to indicate what the problem is. So those are my thoughts for tonight.
The, this particular ordinance changes here because it was one of the possible solutions suggested in the memo. It is something that we have heard from literally dozens of Milton Street residents, that this is something they support and want. Milton Street is three blocks long, I believe, four maybe?
Two.
Sort of one long block, I think, yeah.
That's one long block. It's, it's.
Not very.
It's there. This is something that the residents have asked for and I think it's worth putting, at least putting in front of the council and the council can vote it up or vote it down when, when that time comes. It's here because it's a possible solution. I, again, I agree that the, that the, the previous, you know, traffic study data that we saw and then the one that Mr. Waters told us about, you know, from a couple of years in the past even, that, yeah, it, none of that indicates that there is a, that there's a problem, an abnormally large speeding problem. There are people that speed, but there are people that speed on every street. And this is something, I guess, that the Milton Street residents are asking for, which is why it's here. And, and now I'm repeating myself, so I'll be done. I'm not good with endings.
Can I follow up? I think it's important that we listen to the people. And we heard from, I think, 12, you said?
That's what I counted, yeah.
Which is, I believe, if I'm not mistaken, every single household on Milton Street. You're not going to get that kind of feedback from other parts of this city. And I think it says something, that they came together and they pushed for this. If the 15 mile per hour thing is not a solution, that would then, to me, indicate that the actual solution would be the left and right. Because if we're not going to stop the traffic from going fast across to Milton, then we best make it possible to keep the people from going on Milton, from Catlin Drive. That would be, that would be, if, you know, if there was two choices, those would be my choices. Either you reduce the speed and not change Catlin Drive, or you keep the speed on Milton and turn Catlin into a left or right. No ifs, ands, or buts between.
Okay, so this is tonight's, is the first reading on Ordinance 1280, so we'll advance that to our next agenda for the second reading. Our next agenda item is Resolution 25-51. Sam, would you please read that for us?
City Council Resolution 25-51, denial of the privilege in the streets, in the streets for a prohibited encroachment or incumbent in the right-of-way at 523 South Main Street.
Staff, you want to give a summary of this?
Sure. There's a memo from the Director of Public Works in there as required by the ordinance. This is a little bit of a unique one. This comes up by- This comes up on, has come up in the past on street reconstruction projects. In the past, the city, the city's longstanding policy is that we don't replace carriage walks during a reconstruction, but we have always allowed residents to submit a privilege in the street application in order to retain it at their cost. As a reminder, a privilege in the street grants someone, right, a privilege in order to have something in the city's right-of-way. The city can remove it as it deems necessary at any time. There is no right to have something in the right-of-way. In years past, this would have received a recommendation to approve, as most other carriage walks have received on street reconstruction projects. However, it is slightly within a tree protection zone of a juvenile tree. That's the tree, that, that tree protection zone will grow as the tree grows to encompass more of the area that is in the tree protection zone. As I said, in years past, prior to the adoption of the tree protection zone, the department's recommendation would have been to grant the privilege in the street. We did not feel that we could make that recommendation to you in light of the council-adopted policy. So, we would leave it up to the council to decide whether or not the tree protection policy is a impediment to the granting of this privilege.
Thank you. And I would note, then, that the resolution is drafted as a denial. So, the resolution is drafted consistent with the staff recommendation to deny the privilege.
And it's drafted in such a way because I didn't, I don't think it's appropriate for staff to recommend a violation of city council-adopted policy.
Greg.
How far is the tree from the proposed carriage walk?
Oh, I had pictures.
Eric, are you online? It's feet. It's feet, a matter of feet.
The carriage walk, so I went, I went and looked at this particular location. I actually took some pictures because I wanted to see, like, be able to blow them up in my head and see what's going on. The citizen did a nice job with the T drawing regarding the edge of the T, depending how wide they were to make that pad, would be just inside the current.
Tree protection.
Tree protection zone, the orange gate, if you will, in the tree protection zone. However, the sidewalk is closer to the tree where they had to mill out for our public sidewalk, is a lot closer to the tree trunk than this particular carriage, was it called? Carriage?
Carriage walk.
Carriage walk would be. And so, I, I'm feeling this is a great learning opportunity, since we're talking about the tree protection policy and trying to get our arms around it. It's new for us. I feel that the ask of the citizens that would like to keep the carriage walk would be inconsistent with our own decisions on how we're handling our own construction, parts of, of the project. So, some of the tree protection barriers were actually scooched in on the sidewalk on the south side in order for their big machine to get through. And then, they were, were, like, trying to replace some of them. And so, I feel like it's, it's not a perfect science, that the zones are intended, I think, to protect, but they're not, they're not, I, I think the way you have to kind of work within the, around the zone with the right intent, I think, is important. But I think the spec, the precision, the way that this is coming about, to me, is a challenge. Like, I would support putting the carriage walk in, and I would support it if we wanted to be on this earring on the side of protection, I would take part of the L, or he had the T, take part of the T and make it small to really make sure it's out of the zone. But I, I didn't feel as if it was, it was actually farther away than our own sidewalk to the zone. Because, because it's a rectangle, so this was, the rectangle was narrow, and the zone is narrow. So, our sidewalk is maybe a foot and a half from the, from the trunk, and the protection zone goes three feet on either side from the trunk, because it's a rectangle. And he'd like to put the, they would like to put their carriage walk outside of the long rectangle. So, I feel like, you know, it's, I would support the T or the L version based on what I was looking at. And, and I think this is a great discussion around how, how precise and how, like, when trees grow, they're going to, we wouldn't put anything in. Like, I feel, like, I feel like we're being, would be, to be too restrictive if you can now put up with sidewalks two feet from a tree trunk. And we have, all of our public sidewalks are closer than this carriage walk would be. So, I support the carriage walk, is where I'm coming out based on, and I took some pictures and I, I don't have them with me, but I feel like it's, it's, it's outside, it's, it's close, but it's outside the protection zone, and our sidewalks are actually much closer on all the trees than this would be.
Eric's online.
I'm sorry?
Eric is online. Is there a question for Eric? I do see that he's online.
I, I thought he might know the exact footage, but.
There's a diagram that's been provided, and it does show a T, as Peter described in his public comment. And I'm, I guess I'm unclear, is, is that, so that could be modified just to be a straight line rather than a T?
Or an L. An L or a straight line.
And reduce the impacts in the tree protection zone?
Yeah. The tree is, is, is growing, right? It's, it's growing. So, that, that leads, that is the question you have to grapple with, is does this carriage walk impede the future health of the tree under your tree protection policy? Currently, the, it's, where the tree protection falls, the vast majority of the carriage walk falls outside of it.
Yep.
In years past, we would, it wouldn't have been a, it would not have been a consideration because the policy didn't exist. The only, the, we do, the sidewalk is closer to it. The sidewalk is a public service, right? That is another priority of the city council. And so, that gets balanced as, and the, the way that the policy balances that is that there are certain construction methods that you must do when you are working within that tree protection zone as far as hand excavation, hand, you know, hand pouring, you know, different means and methodologies that are contract item in there. Those same means and methodologies would be required for the privilege in the street that's being, work being done within the tree protection zone, and the total cost gets billed back to the property owner. So, as it sits today, based on the diameter, the DBH of the tree, it catches only a portion of the T. It doesn't impede into the main, either the straight line or the, the other side of the T. So, you could, you could avoid the tree protection zone and only approve that section outside of it. This is a unique, this is the first time we've grappled with this one.
Yeah, yeah.
I, I want to repeat kind of one thing that Drake alluded to there. The city staff is merely responding to an application. The application has the drawing with the T in it. You absolutely can amend that and state, this is what we will allow. The city council is responsible for approving or denying privileges in the street, and you can dictate what this looks like. It is a private infrastructure, as opposed to the public infrastructure that the sidewalk is. There's obviously competing interests there. But you can dictate how and where you will allow such infrastructure. So, I just wanted to make that clear.
I have a question. You mentioned earlier that our policy is to not replace these, but that with an approved application, the property owner could replace it at their own cost. So, if the council decided to approve this tonight, that would be at the cost of the property owner, right? And then, so they would own that structure?
Yeah, I think in this instance where we have the, you know, we would add, we would have our contractor replace it and then bill the cost of that to the property owner. Is that correct, Randy? Yeah.
Oh, as they're doing other concrete work out there.
We would just incorporate it into the, into the project. There'll be, they'll give us a specific cost for that, and then that is billed to the resident.
Would they may like to see a picture? I can pass a picture. This is the, this is, we're looking up to the sidewalk, up to the home in question. So, you'll see the tree protection zone on the right, and they want to come out, and you'll see where the, so if you want to take a look at it.
If we were to put this in, then if the tree's roots caused buckling of that particular piece, that it would be the responsibility of the owner, correct?
Yeah.
Yeah, typically, if a hazard existed, we could order the removal of it from the right-of-way. And that would be at the expense of the resident that has the privilege.
Okay.
There's no right to be in the right-of-way, so the city can order the removal at any time or remove it itself at any time. Typically, that one, that would not occur unless a reason existed for the city to take such an action. So, if we, if a buckling was occurring, that was creating a, some kind of hazard that the city deemed within its right-of-way, we could take remedial action.
Okay.
And I, I think this is, maybe it's the same as what Michelle's saying, slightly different, but the city would have, would not have any liability over any potential damage to that structure if the street tree were to grow?
No.
Okay.
No, there's, because there's no right to be there. The city essentially, in the, in that privilege in the street application, in that permit that gets granted, it is stated that there is no property right to us. The city does not incur any liability for future removals or, you know, anything that might occur that would be in adverse condition to that carriage walk.
Greg.
So, procedurally, this is a denial. If it gets voted down?
Yeah.
Is that automatically an acceptance?
I think in this instance, you wouldn't vote on the resolution. Someone would simply make a motion from the floor to grant the privilege in the street as applied for, or with whatever conditions you want to place on it. Because this resolution is written in such a way, I think amending it would be overly complicated and unnecessary. I think a motion approving the application with whatever conditions you want to put on to it would be adequate, and it would be, it would stand approved, the permit would be issued, and we would just not, we would do away with the resolution, and it would disappear.
So, saying that.
Voting not to deny is not a vote to approve.
Correct.
Right?
That's why you're asking.
That is the difficulty with, this is why resolutions are typically written in the affirmative, because a vote not to approve is a vote to deny. This was different because I was not, I was not comfortable putting a resolution in front of the city council that recommended a violation of your policy.
Okay, so I am going to move to approve the privilege in the street with the designation of the, what do we call it?
The T or the? The carriage walk?
The carriage walk as an L, not a T.
As an L going away from the tree.
Correct.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion by Ms. Quinn. I'll second it by Ms. Schmager to approve the privilege in the street at 523 South Main Street with the condition that the carriage walk be installed as an L, and the portion of the proposed T that's closest to the tree be removed.
Yes.
Am I explaining that correctly?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Any discussion? I got motion.
If you just give us one moment. Dan's making sure the ordinance doesn't require that it's approved by resolution.
Okay.
I may have misspoken.
Can we go into a three-minute recess?
Dan's pretty fast. Looks like he's going to be quick.
I was incorrect. We should, we should change the moat.
You should amend the motion if you'd like to approve the, the privilege. Amend it to approve rather than deny, and I think that establishes it. I have to reread that, that resolution, though. But I do believe that a resolution is required because there are certain statements that are in ordinance that are contemplated within that resolution. So, I, I want to, I want to be precise there. So, let me go back to the resolution itself, and let's think about an amendment if you're looking to grant the privilege in the street.
Okay, I'll make a motion for a five-minute recess while Dan is doing that.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, five-minute recess. Thank you, Dan.
It's important thing.
But thanks for working on that.
Thanks for all of your work on all of that.
Oh, yeah, no worries.
Super appreciate it. But how quick you did it.
What's that?
Like you did it really quick, it's super. Super. Appreciate it. Okay, so where are we? We're on K.
Okay, we're back on the record. We were discussing City Council Resolution 25-51. And, uh, Michelle, were you going to make a motion?
I am, um, sorry, break. Um, I am giving a motion to amend Resolution 25-51 to replace the word denial in the title to granting and amend the be it therefore clause to grant approval of the application with removal of the eastern portion of the T of the carriage walk.
T?
Uh, the eastern portion of the T, so it'll turn into an L.
Which, do you know what whereas that was?
It was in the be it therefore part.
And be it therefore, instead of saying are denied, says are granted?
Mm-hmm.
Is that correct?
Are granted a privilege in the street to place the described carriage walk in and upon the right of way of Milton Street, and that's a Scrivener's Air ad. And then instead of as indicated in the attached applica, application, it would be with the removal of the eastern portion of the T.
Of the carriage walk.
Of the carriage walk. That would be the portion of the carriage walk that juts out closest on the Main Street side.
I said second, I seconded the motion.
Okay, so we have a motion by Ms. Quinnow, seconded by Ms. Schmager to amend Resolution 25-51. Any discussion? Seeing none, can we have a roll call vote on the motion to amend, please? Um, Ms. Quinnow?
Aye.
Mr. Coats?
Aye.
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Ms. Curler?
Aye.
Ms. Schmager?
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0. So then we need a roll call vote to approve the motion as amended?
The resolution.
Okay, sorry. Need a roll call vote to approve Resolution 25-51 as amended. Mr. Coats?
Aye.
Mr. Waters?
No.
Ms. Curler?
No.
Ms. Schmager?
Aye.
Ms. Quinnow?
Aye.
Motion passes 3-2. Thank you. Okay, our next item is the capital improvement plan, Resolution 25-52. So.
Another year's gone by and we're back at the capital improvement plan. Uh, the Public Works Board did review the streets, electric, water, and wastewater, um, capital improvement plan, and they did recommend approval as it was presented to them. There is an analysis, um, of the anticipated borrowings by our financial advisor, Ellers, that's included in your, um, in your packet. I would note that the, um, the city's debt capacity remains healthy. As of 2025, we're at 41%. Obviously, if you add on more debt, that changes that and that fluctuates year to year throughout, um, the, the plan. That is tied to the value, it's 5% of the city's value. And so as the city's value has increased, that debt capacity actually increases as well. So if there are, there are detail sheets included in a large, a large document, and then the summary sheet that is included. Um, there are also items which may very well need to change as decisions are made by the city council specifically related to, um, Sandy Beach, certainly. Um, and then there are, there are also placeholders in there currently for the wastewater treatment plant, um, capital improvement project. Um, so those numbers are not finalized, but wanted to show you that there are likely going to be expenses in the coming years. Um, but we will know more as we continue through that, uh, design process and approval process with the DNR. At this point, if there's any questions, there are a number of department heads available tonight. Um, if there's questions of anyone that's not here, then we can bring them up at a, at a future meeting. Um, but I guess at this point, I'd ask if there's any questions.
Before we get into questions and discussion, I do just want to thank all the staff and department heads, um, looking at the 168-page detail sheets. There's a lot of information that you all have put together for the council's consideration, a lot of, um, background and justification and planning across a five, six-year horizon. So I, I just want to give my thanks to, to the whole team, uh, management team for all your work and dedication to putting this information together for us. So thank you for that. And also, I appreciate what you said, Drake, about, um, you know, we, we do this as a five-year forecast, but every year, you know, it gets updated, so it can be changed. You know, things that are in future years maybe are not, um, so set in stone as the 2026 is something that particularly, um, will go right into our budgeting. So thank you for that reminder on that. So with that, are there any, um, questions or comments that people want to raise? All right, I will kick one off. Other people are looking through their papers, and this is maybe for Eric or Drake, but I noticed, um, uh, about $3 million for Sandy Beach Park that's out in 2030. Um, so I'm assuming, but correct me if I'm wrong, that that's maybe sort of a placeholder for future park improvements. It doesn't mean that we're not going to do any, um, park improvements for five years. Is that, is that correct?
Uh, that's correct. So everything in the, and basically everything in Sandy Beach is based off of that last presentation that was done when we were going over it. And so there was a, if you go back and look in 2030, there's a $3 million placeholder for ice rink, concession shelter, warming hut, restrooms, shelters. Those could be interspersed within the years that are coming up, but, um, since it was kind of undecided of, of, on when or what we're doing in Sandy Beach, we wanted to show that it's in our five-year plan, but that doesn't mean that you can't change that to what years they are, occur as we, um, more clearly define what exactly the council's vision for Sandy Beach is in the future. So you're correct, it is for interior park improvements, um, but it is not, there is no set schedule or even a definitive answer as to what those park improvements would be.
So pending our, our, our decisions on other aspects of the redevelopment, then we can fine-tune those for future years. Great, thank you. Anybody else have a question or comment? I see the people poring over the spreadsheets. So I'll throw out another one while people are doing this. Um, and this is more just a commentary, I think I shared this with you earlier today, Drake. The, the narrative for the library is, is still reflects the two-story addition, and I think we all know that that's been changed to a one-story, but the dollar amount was correct. So in terms of approving the plan, I, I, I think we're right on track with the dollar amount and the, and the year that that was slated for.
Yeah, we'll update that detail sheet.
Mary?
I, I have a question for Randy, and I see he's still here, he's back in the peanut gallery. I, I noticed a few of your items in your detail, you had noted that you were going to bring them, rather than using contractors, you're going to kind of bring them in-house. So I think two of them were, you had a wire pulling equipment and a boom bucket truck, and you were absorbing some work into the department. And I was just curious if you're, if you have, you have the bandwidth, you need new expertise for investments like that, kind of what your thoughts were on some of your new equipment.
You're asking if our current staff has the technical ability?
Well, you, you just, you were, words were like you're absorbing, you weren't going to do third, have third-party people working on it. And so I was thinking, like, is your team just picking on new, is this new work or is this just new equipment, or did you have to borrow equipment? I was just trying to understand your comment on your, you had made a comment in your, that you called it absorbing into the department is kind of the words I wrote, that you were kind of maybe changing the way, instead of outsourcing it, you were bringing it in. I was just curious kind of what you were doing there.
Um, if, if I'm not mistaken, I mean, this is, we are getting more and more into underground work. Um, most new construction is underground work. Um, so we have to make some changes for our equipment, um, because most of the equipment we have, most of our electric fleet is for overhead.
Okay.
And so we, we do have the technical ability, we do have the crew that is capable of doing more underground work. So I think that that was the driver behind that.
Okay. That's all I was checking, I was just wanting to learn about, I didn't know if that was something you were.
Was this on page 21?
I don't know, I've, I'm, I'm going, I'm just.
I'm waiting on my internet.
I have my internet, let's see if it's 21.
Big file.
Yes.
Okay.
Is that the one to be?
It is phrased increase in-house, or in-house work production, not, you know, you're increasing the production.
In-house work production without renting equipment or hiring contractors. So it sounded like you were just bringing on, you're taking on some new accountabilities, and I just was.
There is some equipment we do not own, um, and because of that, we do have to source that out. And this would, because we project, we're going to be doing more and more of that type of work. We feel that the value is for us to own that equipment then.
Okay. Thank you. Well, thanks for finding that. Appreciate it.
Any other, great, did you have something?
I was going to look something up, but I'm still waiting on the internet.
Waiting on the internet, okay. So I have one for Chief Russ, since I saw him come in earlier. Um, I was interested in the proposed, um, I think it was listed as a UTV for wildland fires and things like that, and I appreciate your, the information that you included with that item about kind of our expanded service area and some of the challenges there. So could you just talk a little bit about that, um, equipment, and, and is that common with other, um, fire services of our size?
Yeah, so, uh, good evening.
Mike, the mic is not on.
All right, good evening. Um, so the interesting part about a lot of my budget is, is it's not only directed at the city itself. So please keep that in mind when you're looking at my, the things that I have in my budgetary lines. Um, some might say, well, why do we need a UTV fire response here in the city? Um, a lot of road projects are tagged with having pedestrian paths next to them. Um, there's a lot of bike-riding paths that the city is exploring, pushing through, uh, walking trails, so we're getting people that are off more into the wilderness that are not readily accessible in the city itself. Um, the other part is a lot of our protection area covers a lot of DNR, um, wildlife areas, um, marshes, things like that. So it gets us off-road, uh, there's a lot of trails out in those areas, Glacial Drummond is another big one that's in the area. And, uh, getting our abilities and our resources to get off the beaten path to, say, an injured hunter, a pedestrian, a walker, a biker, um, to those aspects, it's kind of like having a boat for the lake. It allows us to get out to those remote locations. It is very common for departments, um, to have one, and one of the reasons that the City of Lake Mills Fire Department has never had a UTV up to this point has really been, um, the fact that we've depended on our neighbors. But the thing is, is our neighbors are getting busy just like we are. We're experiencing more wildland fires, we're experiencing more remote location incidents. Um, so that was the reason for the push to look at a UTV, um, simply because we have seen those numbers go up and it's starting to anticipate, okay, where are we going to be going and best planned ahead.
Thank you. And just a follow-up on that, um, I recall when we purchased the ladder truck, there was some discussion about our contracts with other entities and what their contributions are when we purchase equipment. So, um, is there anything we need to know about that UTV in particular and, and how that would, how the, the cost of that might be spread throughout the district?
I'm going to excitedly look at Drake on that one.
Sam, could you run through essentially the process you do annually to bill, um, the townships for services and how you kind of break out the capital budget?
Through the process of billing the fire districts, it's based on their assessed, assessed values, and each of them pay a portion of the city's budget. But within that, the capital budget is broke out to where they don't, because we borrow for it, it's put in as a borrowing mechanism, so they pay just like we do on an annual basis rather than an upfront basis.
So it's an abatement to our principal and interest costs.
Okay.
And just one amendment to that, it's, um, equalized value rather than assessed.
Thank you, Drake. Equalized value, okay. So the, the cost of, of fire department equipment generally is distributed across the district on that basis?
Just like the building, uh, the building was that way, now the building has come off, the structure has come off. Um, so that actually gave a decrease to everybody, then now the ladder trucks.
Ladder truck will be on.
Yes.
Okay, great, thank you very much.
No problem.
Gary, did you have another thing? Oh, sorry, I'm glad. Greg?
We should probably touch base on the wastewater treatment plant, since that's a, a lot of dollars. I understand that that'll be more along utility costs than, than, than city costs, but, uh, can you go into that a little bit?
Yeah, so you're going to have, this fall, you're going to have an update from, um, our project engineer on an update to the facilities plan and actual authorization to submit that facilities plan to the DNR later this fall. So at that point, we will have, um, better estimates, uh, better phasing, um, on the project, better estimates associated with those phasing, with that phasing, as well as, um, um, the, uh, the rate increase structure that'll be necessary throughout those phases. Um, so these are placeholders, um, they're semi-informed based on conversations we've had, but that's another project that's going to change as, um, we continue through that. Um, but you should anticipate in the coming months, an update on that as well as authorization to move forward with the facilities plan submittal to the DNR. So right now, they're, um, working on that facilities plan based on the city council direction to proceed with a, um, a renovation, update, expansion at the existing site. And so you'll see that, um, facilities plan and phased plan brought to you in the coming months. Um, and then you'll have a, will have a better idea of the exact costs as well as the, um, program that we would use for financing, as well as the rate structure that'll be necessary to support, um, that proposed financing plan.
Aye. Ms. Curler?
Aye.
Mrs. Schmager?
Aye.
Ms. Quednow?
Aye.
Mr. Coats?
Aye.
Motion passes five-zero.
Thank you. That concludes council business. So we have announcements and recommendations for future agendas. Uh, Drake, you alluded to, um, we'll have the city budget coming up, um, in the next, uh, few meetings.
Yep, so we'll have, uh, we're targeting September sixteenth for the, um, operating and capital budget presentation, uh, to the City Council. Uh, September second, we have the, um, resolution on B-level that the council has requested. Um, in, I don't know if it'll be end of September or beginning of October, but we are anticipating bringing the, uh, Travis Anderson, our engineer for the wastewater treatment plant program, and for an update and, uh, action from the City Council on submitting that facilities plan. Those are, um, three of the, three of the big ones, um, that are coming up in the very near future.
Thank you. And we had a few items. Um, this evening that we carried forward, um, for second or third readings at future meetings. Um, I would also know, Dan, I've been talking with Dan and Mary about our annual performance review season for our city managers, so you'll be getting an email from Dan soon with the schedule for that. So just be prepared to work on your, uh, individual performance evaluations in early September. Um, and he'll, he'll send you more details on the schedule, um, sometime in the next week or two.
And there are also active applications in front of the Plan Commission that may make their way, um, to the City Council at the meetings in September.
Okay. Sounds good. Anything else from council members? Okay, seeing none, uh, close that item, and, um, our next agenda item is to convene into closed session. Uh, it's described on the agenda, the purposes, so I'll ask for a motion.
So moved?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Waters, seconded by Ms. Quednow. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, motion passes five-zero. Um, so we will be convening into closed session. Uh, when we reconvene, it will be off-camera. So we'll say goodnight for this evening. Thank you.